Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We are waiting on two council members, but we're going to go ahead and start this meeting anyways because I think the important ones are here. And so let's go ahead and call the city council to order. Let the record reflect that we have council members Kovall and McNellis here, the mayor's here, and we are expecting the others to come in. They're just running a little bit late. And so tonight, the invocation will be given by Pastor Jamie Pangman. And I'm going to tell you a short biography. And then the Pledge of Allegiance will be led tonight by our own Eric Hayes. And so your boss should have warned you that you've been the new guy here, so that's going to probably happen. So, all right then. So let me tell you a little bit about Jamie. So we welcome you as a senior pastor from the Santee United Methodist Church tonight. The church is at 8964 Magnolia Avenue. And Pastor Pangman received his master's degree from Boston University School of Theology, and he's served the church for four years. Thank you for your service there. Let's see. How did this church get started? A group of earnest Christians started the Santee United Methodist Church in the old Santee Elementary School on Mission Gorge Road and Edgemore Drive. The afternoon services were held and attended by people of several denominations. The women started a ladies' aid group that was interested in establishing a house of worship. Consequently, a meeting was held at the home of L.I. Porter to decide on the church's denomination. Very old resident of Santee. Today, Santee United Methodist Church is a testimony to God's faithfulness. As the area around the church changed, effective ministry continued for over 100 years. Faithful to its call from God, Santee United Methodist Church has undergone many changes, including name changes. They look forward to continued growth, expansion, renewal, and community revitalization. Pastor Pangman considers it an honor and a blessing to be a pastoral leader in this community and is grateful to call Santee home. Pastor Pangman is grateful for the opportunity to share in seeking to make Santee a community that cares for all people. The Santee United Methodist Church is proud to host the Second Annual Pride Walk on June 22nd from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., and you'll be starting at the church. So tonight, we ask you to pray for the United States of America, State of California, Santee, and of course, this council. So please rise.
Let us pray. God of wisdom, we come together this evening seeking to serve our community and the people who live, work, and play in it. We ask your blessings on all of us gathered here, and especially this evening on the people called to lead us. Please help us to remember that we are called not only to be leaders, but servants, and that it is our responsibility to serve the common good of all. Remind us that no matter where we live, everyone is our neighbors, our siblings, and throughout the ages, you have called the leaders of the people to respect and protect the least of these among us: our children, the elderly, the poor, those who are hungry, those who have no homes, those who are ill in body, mind, or spirit, the strangers and immigrants in our midst, those who live on the margins, those who are alone, those who are forgotten. Grant us the wisdom and courage to know and do what is right and good and true. May we speak out when it is time to speak out and listen patiently and receptively when it is time to listen. May we always be guided by your Spirit, which guides us into deeper relationship with one another, deeper justice in our world, and deeper love for all people. We pray these things in your holy name. Amen.
Remain standing and face the flag of the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This is the part of the meeting where we try and have a little bit of fun. So we're going to do some proclamations here tonight, and the first one is going to be with Public Works. So if you're with the Public Works Department of the City of Santee, why don't you come forward? Some of you have been here before, so you know where to bring those who haven't been here before, and I'll meet you right down there. Test, one, two, three. Oh, I can hear it now. All right. What a motley-looking crew this is. Mega hole here. You guys ready for this? Man. You know, we don't have anybody out in the audience, really, and you guys are just shut down, okay, whatever. All right. Next time, you know, bring your enthusiasm. So Santee proclamation, whereas Public Works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities, and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of people of Santee, California. And whereas this year focuses on advancing quality of life for all, and whereas these employees may be frontline workers, office workers, engineers, consultants, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in Santee, California to gain knowledge of and maintain an ongoing interest, respect, and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas all citizens are urged to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies in activities, events, and ceremonies designed to recognize our public works professionals and the substantial contributions they make to protecting our health, safety, and quality of life. And whereas, the year 2024 marks the 64th Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Now, therefore, I, John Minto, Mayor of the City of Santee, on behalf of this entire city council, do hereby proclaim May 19 through 25, 2024, as Public Works Week in the City of Santee, and encourage residents to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our health, safety, and quality of life as they advance quality of life for all. Thank you. So Sam, are you going to be accepting this, or who's going to accept this?
You could.
Okay, come on down. And let's see. I think I have a microphone here I can have you speak on. This is your opportunity to take charge.
I want to say thank you to the mayor, vice mayor, council, city manager.
Hold on one second. Let's play the video, Mr. Gooden.
Oh my gosh, nobody told me about that.
Well, thank you to the mayor, vice mayor, city council, city manager. I think we appreciate the recognition and the support that helps us do our job every day and, you know, serve the city of Santee. We all love doing it.
Great, thanks. And for those that are watching at home, when you see our folks out there working, especially around the streets and stuff, pay extra special attention that you stay as far away as you can. Slow down if they're in the roadway because we don't want anybody to be injured or worse. So thank you.
Do a picture for Linda Maricall.
Well, you know what? Why don't you move in a little bit on the end so we can get this all in here?
We need to make Linda proud tonight.
You guys all work together, you know? Don't be shy.
I'm going to take a couple, and may the best one get closer.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
My pleasure. All right. Do we? This one is, I don't think we have anybody here. We do, okay. Come on up, sir. And I'm sorry, but I didn't get your name.
Luis.
Luis.
Valdivia.
Valdivia?
Valdivia.
Valdivia? Oh, Luis Valdivia. Well, welcome.
Thank you.
And you're from the Delmar Fairgrounds?
Yes.
And do you actually work for the 22nd Agricultural District?
I do. I'm a full-time employee.
Great, you're the right guy then.
That's what they say.
All right then. Just work with me on this. Try and make me look good here, okay? Keep being try.
Okay.
So everybody knows that the Delmar Fair is coming up real soon, so we've created proclamation for the fair. And so it reads this way, Santee, California proclamation. Whereas the San Diego County Fair, produced by the 22nd District Agricultural Association, is the region's largest community celebration, the fair is hosted annually at the Delmar Fairgrounds, but it serves the entire county, including the beautiful and prosperous city of Santee. And whereas the San Diego County Fair first began in 1880, while the event has evolved and changed names and locations over the years, the San Diego County Fair has continued to serve as a gathering place for all San Diegans, including Santee residents, to have fun, dine together, listen to music, enjoy rides and games, see live entertainment, and learn about agriculture and the world around them. And whereas the San Diego County Fair provides opportunities for Sante small businesses, farmers, landscapers, gardeners, artists, crafters, woodworkers, photographers, collectors, and others to showcase their wares and talents, the fair helps promote the San Diego County and area businesses, families, neighbors, and diverse communities together in a festive atmosphere. And whereas groups from the City of Santee participate in the San Diego County Fair as entertainers and performers, such as the dance group from City of Santee Recreation Services, the East County Ballet Conservatory, and expressions dance performing groups. And whereas the San Diego County Fair forms key partnerships with groups such as nonprofits, schools, sponsors, and youth development organizations to make annual festivities more equitable, more educational, more accessible, and more exciting for young people. Students Showcase, Best of K-6, the Junior Livestock Show, Plant Grow Eat Fair for All Kids Days, and Care and Share Toy Drive are some of the programs that are a result of great partnerships between the San Diego County Fair and the San Diego County community. Whereas the 2024 San Diego County Fair runs from June 12th, June 12th through July 7th, June 12th through July 7th, except for Mondays and Tuesdays, providing 20 days of fun, family, food, adventure, entertainment, and educational opportunities for residents of Santee and other San Diego County communities. And whereas the 2024 San Diego County Fair's theme is "Let's Go Retro," I think I could probably find something for that, focusing on the era of the 1950s through the 1990s, I definitely was there. And now, therefore, be it resolved that I, John Minto, Mayor of the City of Santee, along with the entire city council members, do hereby proclaim June 12, 2024, as San Diego County Fair Day in the City of Santee, and recognize the San Diego County Fair's longstanding significance to our diverse communities and the City of Santee's connection to its cherished tradition. There you go, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. What is your favorite decade?
What is my favorite decade? It's going to be the next decade because I'll be retired.
Well, the San Diego County Fair, indeed, the theme is "Let's Go Retro," and in the spirit of the theme, it's okay to call it the Delmar Fair this time around.
I never stopped.
I know. And of course, it's been called other names like the Southern California Exposition, of course. But yes, the San Diego County Fair serves the entire county, belongs to the entire county, including the City of Santee, so see you at the fair.
You know, I actually remember when Don Diego was a regular sighting at the fair.
Yes, he was our ambassador.
Yes, he was.
For the longest time, yeah.
Yeah. And for those of you who don't know, it was a character who represented San Diego County, and because Diego, San Diego, and he was a Don in our community, so he was a great representative. People had a lot of fun. He took so many pictures with people, so many kids, and that's why I probably remember because I remember going there as a young person, and, you know, and you always look forward to that kind of thing. So we thank the Agricultural District for putting this on every year and continuing to make it a place for everybody to have a great time.
It's a lot of work, but it's really fun.
Yeah, great.
See you there.
Thank you, Luis. Oh, wait, there's more.
Some souvenirs for you and the council.
All right, great, thank you very much. All right, here's what I'm going to do is I'm going to pass these down to Kathy, and you can take care of these for us if you would, please. Make sure it's all legal and ethical. Give me just a moment here, and I'll get ready to keep going again. What's that? I don't know, I don't have the information. That's okay, you can hold on to it. Always have a backup when I do stuff like that. She's making fun of me because I left my glasses with her, along with the microphone and everything. So, all right then, let's get down to business. Let's see. Let's see, where's the... Well, consent calendar, is that what you do? Okay. Let's see, consent calendar. Any additions, deletions, or corrections? Any council members, city manager, city attorney, are there any speaker slips?
No, sir.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve?
I moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. That takes us to non-agenda public comment. Any speaker slips?
Yes, sir. I have one speaker, Nick.
Come on up.
My name is Nick Leadis. I'm a model citizen with an unimpeached record of model citizenry. I'm a decorated veteran of the United States Army Military Police Corps. I spoke at last week's Padre Dam meeting. This narrative is going to be fragmented because there's not a lot of time. What I described was a circumstance that occurred in front of my home. There was a water main leak break, big, big one. I came in at 1:00 in the morning with a fire hydrant in front of my driveway. My meter is about 1,000 feet from there. It was a water break. I called it in, Public Works fixed it the next day. It was real nice, but there was a big hole in the street. That's certainly understandable. About a month later, they came to, they put gravel there, and then a month later, they came to fill it, to do the asphalt work. The asphalt works literally in front of my driveway. We drive low cars, electric cars, partly because you're making us do that, by the way, and so we're doing what you want us to do. Can't get the cars in and out of the driveway because it got completely washed out, foot deep. I'm calling them every week, begging, "Please hold." That's how they speak to people, because they're like, "One of your disgusting clients is on the phone. One of those customers that pay our bills is on the phone. Please hold." So they transferred me to a guy named, I'm not going to say his name because we have pending litigation right now, because he's asked me for bribes to fix it. Now, while there was a work crew out there, it wasn't Public Works, it was a contractor that was out there, I went out there, I go, "How you doing, gentlemen? Thank you so much. Please fill in, just take some of that loose gravel, fill it in so we can get the cars in and out. My family can't get in and out. I got to move them out of my house." And a guy goes, "Well," you know, and another guy, I'm Hispanic, and you could tell, and sometimes when I'm in front of my house, you could look at me, and you could tell this guy's like Hispanic. So a guy that looks like he's not too seasoned, as far as, let me just say that, I can't put it any other way without sounding racist, tattoos, I recognize some of this stuff. It looked like he came right out of one of the villages in southern Mexico. That's what the hell it looked like, which is a wonderful thing unless he's asking you for a bribe in your driveway. He came up and went like, "Amigo, ¿qué tal, cómo estás?" He went like that. Okay, you're putting me in a position where I have to expose public servants for bribery, and you're risking my life, my family, you're asking me what my address is on that slip right there, which I had to publicly expose. That's all I'm going to say right now. Let me just say one more thing also. The working-class people tend to treat each other better because they communicate more sincerely. The customer service at Padre Dam is absolutely shameful, it's shameless, and it's because you allow those people to pay themselves too much. You got a woman out there making $30,000 a month, she's an accountant. In California, an accountant makes like a hundred grand. I have a cousin that's a pharmacist, we're not all uneducated idiots, and he makes $150 grand, he's got like 24 years of school. He...
Thank you, thank you, Nick. Thanks, Nick.
No further speakers, sir.
Thank you. That takes us to a public hearing. Item number 12, public hearing and resolution adopting, approving, and amending amendment to the Transnet Local Street Improvement Program for fiscal years 2023 through 2027, amending the capital improvement program budget. And Carl's not here, and so Steve's going to fill in, right?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, members of city council. Tonight's staff is before you with the public hearing and resolution amending the Transnet Local Streets Improvement Program for fiscal years 2023 through 2027. To start off, previously, we were with council in March of this year to approve the 2025 RTIP program of projects. This item is to amend the current RTIP, which is the 2023 to 2027 RTIP, which is the projects that are being funded currently and are either under construction or finishing construction. The Regional Transportation Improvement Plan, it's a five-year investment plan, it identifies all projects and programs in the San Diego region that are proposed to be funded with transportation funds. These are projects that are funded with federal, state, or Transnet funds, and are all included in the RTIP. The Transnet ordinance requires approval by resolution for any amendment to the program of projects, their schedules or funding whenever those changes are required, especially when you're making changes to Transnet Local Streets Improvement Funding. Next slide, please. The amended projects are the pavement repair and rehabilitation projects, the SNT 04, and the pavement roadway maintenance, SNT 22, program projects. To start off, the pavement rehab and rehabilitation, that's our larger roadway maintenance projects such as overlays and reconstructions. And the pavement roadway maintenance, that's our slurry seals, our cape seals, and patching, which have now predominantly become more of the streets that we do. We can get more streets done as they typically cost less under those programs. And what this amendment is doing, it's a net zero cost to the overall funding that we have through Transnet for paving, and we're aligning the budget with what the streets that were completed with this past fiscal year. So we did a considerably larger amount of streets with the pavement roadway maintenance programs versus the pavement repair and rehab program projects. So this is more of an accounting adjustment internally with Transnet, aligning the funding to match with the projects that were completed. Next slide. And with that, city staff is recommending that city council conduct a public hearing and adopt the resolution approving the amendment to the Transnet Local Streets Improvement Program for fiscal years 2023 to 2027.
Thank you. We do not have any speaker slips on that. Council comments?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second. Please vote. Good job, Steve.
Motion carries unanimously.
That takes us to item number 13, which is New Business, Resolution Awarding the Construction Contract to the Citywide Pavement Repair and Rehabilitation Program, 2024, CIP 2024-01, project, and determining the project is categorically exempt from the environmental review under the California Environmental Quality Act, per state SEQA guidelines, Section 15301(c). And I think Steve's going to do that one, too.
Back up again. Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, and members of city council. Tonight's staff is before you with a resolution awarding the construction contract for the Citywide Payment Repair and Rehabilitation Program, 2024, and determining the project is categorically exempt from SEQA under Section 15301 subsection c. The Citywide Payment Repair and Rehab Program, this is the streets and roadway resurfacing contract that does the larger reconstructions and overlay contracts. This project has streets that were approved by the city council when we met in January to go over our pavement management workshop. On May 9, 2024, we received six bids for the project. The lowest bid was submitted by Quality Construction and Engineering Incorporated in the amount of $1,138,000, or, excuse me, $1,138,811.86. This bid was 18% lower than the engineer's estimate. We are seeing more favorable bids right now as the oil prices are coming down, which is a large cost indicator for all of our street resurfacing projects. Staff reviewed the bid, and staff recommends city council award the construction contract to Quality Construction and Engineering as the lowest responsive and responsible bidder. And staff recommends authorization for change orders in the amount not to exceed $284,700, which is 25% of the total contract amount for unforeseen items and additional work. We are requesting the 25% amount in change orders since we received lower bids and would like to add additional streets to this contract with budget is available in construction to move forward with streets that are approved in the payment management report and have been programmed through Transnet and SB 1 for the RMRA funding that's also used on this contract. As part of the contract, a total of 11 streets are included, and as I said, they are funded only with Transnet and Gastex RMRA funds. This attached project map is showing the streets that are included in the contract. These are residential zones BA, which is in the northern area of District 1, Zone AH, which is in the western area of District 1 as well. Maricall Lane, the northern portion of the roadway. Maricall Lane was scheduled to be resurfaced about two years ago, and with the ongoing development that was going on on site, we delayed that project to get all the utility work in place, and now with work completed, we're recommending completing that now as it's our priority to not go through and repave streets when we know there will be development or any form of utility work in the future. The other neighborhood zone in here is Zone FI, which is on the eastern end of District 2, and I'll go into detail on the specific streets. For Zone BA, in the northern zone of District 1, that includes Cabo Court, East Haven Court, East Haven Drive, Keith Street, and Princess Arlene Drive. On Zone AH, that includes Beck Drive, Via Quiemaca, Via Frances. And on Zone FI, those include two streets, which is Canyon Park Drive and Canyon Park Terrace, and all of these roads primarily include reconstruction or overlay. or overlay. Next slide, please. And attached is the list of the streets I just went over for the three residential zones in Maricall Lane. Staff recommends city council award the construction contract for the citywide pavement repair and rehabilitation program 2024 to Quality Construction and Engineering in the amount of $1,138,811.86, and authorize the city manager to execute the contract on behalf of the city. In addition, we're recommending city council authorize the director of engineering, city engineer, to approve change orders in a total amount not to exceed $284,700, and determine the project as categorically exempt under SEQA.
Thank you. Any speaker slips?
No speaker, sir.
Thank you. I'm going to go to council. Questions or comments? Vice Mayor, I mean. Counselwoman?
So Steve, have we worked with Quality Construction and Engineering before?
Yes, we have. They're currently the contractor that just recently patched Mission Gorge Road and on Fenita Drive.
And you're satisfied with the quality of their work?
Yes, we are. I think they did some of the best patching we've seen in the last couple of years for a major street.
Great. And speaking of Mission Gorge, in this change order, I don't think it's one of the things we talked about when we were talking about what else we could do if we had extra funds. But the intersection on Mission Gorge in front of Town Center where Chili's is, is a little rough. So, I don't know. It's not a, it's not a big area, but-
Okay, so at the intersection of Mission Greens and Mission Gorge?
Yeah.
Okay, that's something we can look at.
Okay, great. Those were my questions. Thanks.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Before I call for the vote, I just wanted to, I was going to ask that same question. Have we seen their references, seen their work, and do they get the streets nice and flat and smooth?
Yes, they have. And we do reiterate to them in the pre-construction meetings the quality that we are going to hold them to. We have some other projects across town which we have held the feet to the fire for contractors recently as well.
All right, great. Thank you. Let's vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
That takes us to item number fourteen, which is a resolution approving the agreement with Quidient? Does anybody know if I'm saying that right even? Leasing USA. And just in case I'm saying that wrong, I'm going to spell it for the record, Q-U-A-D-I-E-N-T, Leasing USA Incorporated, for the lease of mailing equipment, supplies, and maintenance per National Association of State Procurement officials, NASPO for short. I should have started with that. ValuePoint issued master agreement number CTP 058809, and State of California participating addendum number 722705004. Annette?
Would you, you'd like a report on this? So I'm going to have James come out. He's the, he's been-
All right.
Working on this.
Well, your name was on it, so that's all I had, the only go-to I had.
James cannot wait to do this report.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and-
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any further comments or questions? Okay, please vote.
I can't think now. Motion carries unanimously.
Is he going to do any other ones? Okay, then. That's going to take us to item number fifteen, which is consideration of the appointment of two city council members as an ad hoc committee to advise on fire station design. Chief?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the city council. We're at, we're now at a stage in the design of our permanent fire station where we would like input from the city council. We've had several meetings with Core, the contractor that was awarded the contract, and those have been mostly operational. This is the size of the bay, this is the, this is the number of beds that we need. And we've been working really close with CSD and PSD to make sure that our needs and their needs are going to be met with the site. At our last meeting, which was last week, they presented some first, first draft renderings. And we put a pause on it saying, we don't, at this point, we want to make our committee bigger and bring in some council members to provide input. So that's what we're asking for, is to help us decide what this beautiful station is going to ultimately look like when we get the funding for it. But the design process, it's been pretty fun to see this evolve, and we'd love for you to collaborate with us.
Great. Any speaker slips?
No, sir.
All right.
Mayor, can I just make a point, sorry, over here?
Yes, sir.
Just the, the Fire Department has its own committee, and they're working on those things. What we're, what we're asking is you guys, if you wish to appoint this ad hoc committee, it'll be a separate committee, they'll work with them, but just, it has to be done that way to comply with legal requirements.
No problem. Well, my recommendation for the appointment is the Vice Mayor, Dustin Trotter, and Councilwoman Laura Koval, for a couple of reasons. One is because I know Dustin, for instance, has had a great interest in this and is on the SLMSA committee along with Laura, who is on SLMSA. And I think it's a perfect fit for them to stay with firefighting, you know, issues. So that's my recommendation. Unless, you guys have another one?
No, I would prefer Council, or Vice Mayor Trotter on there as well, just because of his background in construction.
And Laura's put things together, so.
So, well, that's, that's my recommendation. So-
Second your motion.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second.
I'll second it.
I have a second by Councilmember McNellis. I was actually the motion on that. And please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right, that takes us to another round of non-agenda public comment. Do we have speaker slips?
No, sir.
Thank you. That takes us to city council reports. And Ron, I'm going to have you go first. Did you want to talk about ICSE?
I'm a lot, Marlene going a lot more detail, but, you know, we went up there, I'll start it off, though. We went up there and it was probably one of the more successful ones we've been to. Every time, we kept hearing yeses, and we didn't quite understand why, but we kept hearing, people are definitely interested in investing in this city. We did get some information about what's going in next to Trader Joe's, and then we did get some other fillings that are coming in. So I got some commitments that are coming in, and we, and Marlene told me if I'm going out of realm here, that's why I don't want to say too much. But basically, it was very positive the whole time we were there. I was, I don't think we've ever felt that positive going in. The last day we met for a meeting and about areas to develop, and some big developer just goes, hey, we're in. So it's, and again, I don't want to start naming names and things like that because I don't want to, yeah, she's already shaking her head. But we can talk later.
Nothing, nothing like non-disclosure agreements. Did you want to expand on that before we go on to the other council members? Okay. And was that it? Oh, by the way, for those who don't know, ICSE is the International Council of Shopping Centers.
Okay, four updates, sorry. But I'll be quick. We had two SLMSA meetings, and it was unique because we basically kept our first meeting open and continued it last Friday, the 17th. And the crux of it was because the ambulance services gets a reimbursement. When they do a transport for Medi-Cal, is it Medi-Cal or Medicare?
It's Medicaid.
Medicaid, so I was totally wrong.
But there is actually a Medi-Cal component as well.
So when, when they do a transport for a Medicaid patient, we're reimbursed a fee, but we were actually undercharging for that fee. So we were, we were missing out on revenue, and the SLMSA commissioners approved to basically write, write the costs that we're charging to Medicaid. I had a Sandag meeting with the independent auditor that was hired for Sandag, and, you know, I don't usually talk positively about Sandag, but this was a really good and productive meeting. She told me what she's working on, and I told her about my concerns. And I, and she followed up immediately with some information that I asked for, like within 10 minutes. So, you know, she's really on the ball, and I really appreciated that meeting. Last Saturday, I was the, I don't know, co-master of ceremonies at the Special Olympics at West Hills High School that was put on by the Aquanis Club. Lots, lots of, lots of kids there. Not just, I mean, they traveled from, I think, LA, I'm all over, and it was a great event. Of course, the mayor was there, and just a really rewarding day. And then, what else? Oh, last night. Last night, I was at the Santee School District, and it was the 50th anniversary of their academic achievement awards. So I wanted to give a shout out to the students who won individual awards. Two students were nominated from each school in the Santee School District, but here's the individual winners. The mathematics winner was Micah Petrie from Pepper Drive. The essay winner, Ryan Robotham from Carlton Oaks. The speech winner, Sophia Bernardino from Rio Seco. And the overall winner, Jack Barrett from Chet F. Harret Elementary School, and the city proclaimed yesterday Jack Barrett Day in the city of Santee.
You know what? Every time I attended that, there was somebody that excelled in political science or whatever, and I figured those are going to be the people taking my job in a few years.
You know what they all had in common? Video games. They all loved to play video games. I'm like, oh.
Okay, well, maybe not then. I'm going to go ahead and get the rest of the council members, then I'll come back to me. And so Vice Mayor?
Your report, sir.
And council member, McNellis? Okay. Well, then, it's interesting that you mentioned about Sandag, because I, too, usually don't have a lot of great things to say about it. But this independent auditor has been really stirring things up, bringing things out that have been going on for an awful long time. We don't really have our thumb on the reasons for that. We don't know if there was corruption or just, you know, malfeasance, or if it was just somebody just didn't know how to do their job. I think we're going to eventually get to that. And, but we have a new CEO who's been named. His name is Mario Oso. Mario's been around an awful long time. And the interim CEO has announced her retirement on June 14. Mario takes over that Monday on the 17th. So it'd be a lot of interesting events going on here in the near future. So I would suggest anybody that's interested in what's going on with regional transportation to keep an eye on that. People who are looking at regional planning also, as it pertains to housing and business and industry, can be very interesting. And then just a real quick update on the Highway 52. Some of the things that have gone on there is we got a couple million dollars from Darrell Issa's office, and that's been turned over to Sandag, basically, because they have to do, they're the financing agency for getting work done with Caltrans. And so that, there's planning and things going on with that. We understand that Darrell Issa is looking at trying to secure another $10 million for us, which is going to go a long ways in helping make some corrections on the 52 that should have been done way long time ago, before they even built it, probably. The engineering should have been different. And then also, the one really good part about this is, one of our plans was to take that southbound transition from the I-15 to the 52 that everybody gets stopped up in every afternoon, for instance, and extend out the acceleration lane so that people can get on there a lot faster without the bottlenecking. Well, Caltrans actually, believe it or not, has decided they're going to take that on as a state project right away. So they're in the process of doing the design so they can begin to build on that. And then some of the other talk that we've had about is having HOV lanes for certain times of the day on the Highway 52. For instance, going westbound, it'd be like in the morning hours, and then it becomes just a regular lane during the rest of the day. And then coming eastbound in the afternoon, then it would be during other times would be a regular lane. So and then, of course, the big thing for us is getting that truck lane put on the 52 westbound, which requires us to remove the bicycle lane. And that will eventually go to the south side of the street, but not in any kind of already designated lanes of traffic. So it'd be a lot better for everybody, get traffic moving. I think this last statistic I heard that would increase the flow of traffic by about 24%, if I remember correctly. So that's still in the works. We're still working back in Washington DC, make sure that we get all the funding we need. State of California, I've been up there recently, is last month, talking to people, legislators about what we need from them also. And it's mostly getting Caltrans, you know, off their proverbial duffs and quit leaning on the shovel and start working. So that's what's going on with that. Any questions or anything there? What's, oh, the construction right now, I haven't got word on that. It is not one of our projects, though. We, I think it's because of all those dips that they have to repair every so often. So they, they're starting in that center and then working their way out from, that, and that's what I think they're doing there. I can get a, this Friday, we'll have another meeting. I can ask specifically what's going on there. So that's what I have. City manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll try to keep this relatively short, but I would like to add my congratulations and appreciation to our public services crew. They get recognized once a year, but we try to give them a little pat on the back every now and again, just because they do work very, very hard, every single one of them, and we appreciate them. In addition to which, there are several events coming up here in the city. I guess I'm, have the opportunity to be able to highlight those right now. This Friday is our second Friday Night's Live. The presentation performance is going to be by Expressions Dance Studio. That's 5:30 to 7 o'clock at Santee Trolley Square. Our community services department puts that together every Friday night from now until June 7. And it's a nice way to get the family out and have a little bit of fun on a Friday evening. Not only do we have that event this Friday, but on Saturday, our Santee Chamber of Commerce is going to be sponsoring our street fair. That happens on Saturday from 10 to 6, just outside of Santee Trolley Square on Riverview Parkway and Town Center Parkway. It should be a lot of fun. I encourage everybody to come on down, see what our businesses have to offer, and enjoy themselves here in Santee. In addition to which, the following Friday is another Friday Night's Live. And we also have on Friday, Friday, May 31st, this is probably the last time we get to hear about it, but Friday, May 31st is our Heroes Golf Classic. It does honor our Marines who are our adopted unit from the city of Santee. You can play for $125 a pop. You can sponsor a Marine to play for $75. You can just come out and sponsor and pay for anybody else who wants to play at $75 a pop. There are sponsors for the holes, there are gifts, there are goodie bags, includes breakfast and a burrito for lunch, burrito for breakfast, rather, and a sandwich for lunch. And we really do want to encourage people to come on out. There are still a few spots left to provide assistance to our Marine unit. Those monies that we raise will go directly to the Marine Corps to be able to help support our Marines for the activities that they can do while they're enlisted into the Corps. The specific goal that we have right now is for, we call it the Birthday Ball, that's what they call it. It's more than that. It's not just a birthday party. It is, once a year, to honor the birthday of the Marine Corps. And we want to see that all of the members of our adopted unit have a chance to participate. It gets a little expensive, and those newly enlisted Marines don't have a lot of money to be able to go participate in anything fun. The Marine Corps, as highlighted at our last city council meeting, they have $12.50 a year for each Marine, including any support for their families. So that doesn't go very far. So the city has stepped up over the years, and we're allowing our community to help support as well. So thanks to our council members for helping to support it, as well as our businesses and our sponsors. And we encourage anybody else who's interested to please go ahead and look on the city website. There's a link there where you can sign up.
Marlene, can I jump in for just a minute?
Please, sir.
Because I think it's important to give a little history on how we became involved with adopting units. And most people don't know it, but they hear about it. But this all started back in 1967, when a lady by the name of Linda Patterson received a letter from her brother who was in Vietnam. And he talked about how low the morale was- from her brother who was in Vietnam, and he talked about how low the morale was, and how nice it would be probably to get some kind of letters or something from home and have that connection. So, she went to her city council in the city of San Mateo, California, and they said, you know, this sounds like a good idea, we can get the kids together from the schools, write letters, and send them things. And, and so, seven days, though, after they adopted this Army unit, her brother was actually killed in the line of duty. And so, all these years later, Linda is still involved in a group that she created called America Supporting Americans. And it was a little bit quiet for a while until 9/11, and then when 9/11 occurred, obviously, people became a lot more interested because we were deploying at a greater rate again. Men and women were away from home for a longer period of time than they had for a very, very long time. And then Duncan Hunter Senior, who was our congressman, he came to Mayor Randy Vopel and said, hey, Randy, did you know about this organization? Maybe we should, maybe you could look into adopting a unit. And so, he came to the council, and that was in about 2003, and the council said, yes, we'd like to do that. We contacted ASA, and they gave us the Second Marine First Division, and then later on, we were lucky enough, we got the heavy haulers out of Miramar. And so, what we've done over the years is we have participated, it's hard to describe the feeling you get about helping men and women who've been deployed a long time, and or their families who have not seen their other family members for a long time. Some come back, they go straight to the barracks, they don't necessarily have the toiletries that they need when they get there, but what we try to do is collect those kinds of things, so it's waiting for them when they get there. We put on parties and barbecues, and we have them out to the Santee Salutes because veterans are very important to us, and so, this is just an extension of that, and so, that's the history. Matter of fact, I think, Rob, did you and I go on a mock deployment in an Afghan village up in Camp Pendleton? We did, with Randy Vopel, and I think that was in, were you there also? I couldn't remember everybody there, but, you know, it was a lot of fun, but you know what? When they had the Maquis EDs going off and stuff like that, and the sounds of weapons firing near you, it suddenly brings it all into perspective that it's not about fun and games, it's about real-life situations, and that's what we need to remember, is that what they do is about real-life situations every single day.
I've got a video of that, actually, and we do have, I just remember the, how realistic it was when we walked through there. The people were dressed in the garb, they were talking in language.
We had to use interpreters, actually, yes. So, and Captain, I think you were involved in some of that stuff when you were in the Marine Corps, weren't you?
Yes, sir.
Well, thank you very much for that service, we appreciate that. So, that's all I'm gonna leave us with, but I just thought it was important for everybody to understand why we're so connected, and how we're connected. City Attorney?
Mayor, I don't have a formal report, I will just note that pursuant to your council procedures, there is a chance that there's a report of action out of closed session tonight.
Okay, thank you. And I'm sorry, Marlene, were you finished? Okay, great, thank you. I know, I just kinda, after talking, went on with my own bad self. Okay, that concludes all the reports, we're gonna go into closed session, that's item number 16, conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation. All right, let the record reflect that we're back in open session. A vote was taken to give direction to solve the case with Santee Trolley Square, and it was unanimous vote. That worked for you, Sean?
Yes, the report out of the vote is the key part, and you just did that, so thank you for that.
All right, okay, that means meeting's adjourned.